Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
6 o'clock, we'd like to call the meeting to order.
We're gonna actually, I just wanted to address the board here for a quick second. You may have seen former county board chairwoman Pat Anger had passed away. I got the opportunity to serve with her for two years. She had the task of having four brand-new commissioners on the board at the time, and none of us knew how to, what Robert's rules were or any of that stuff, so very, very interesting time. Just a very passionate person. Pat graduated from Marysville, lived in this area her whole life, and, you know, I just can't say enough good things about her. Howard?
I had served two prior years with Pat, and I know that when she entered in the four newbies, and we had a bomb dropped on us regarding the Intervention Center in the cost, the Intervention Center. We had a brand-new administrator comptroller in Sean Groden, and quite frankly, it was a real challenge, but I think we made a lot of right decisions then on dealing with that difficult problem. I think there was a real learning curve certainly for us, and the experience we had when we started the Convention Center, you made it a point, Jeff, to make sure that we monitored that building project all the way, you know? And we had an oversight committee set up, board members. We brought it in on budget and on time, and, well, let's not say on tape, we definitely brought it on budget. And so, yes, there were some tense moments there early, but I think she handled it well. I think Sean Groden did an excellent job, and I think in retrospect, the whole thing turned out well.
Just like to have a moment of silence, please.
If I could, just want to say something also and then let you finish, but I didn't know Pat Anger very well. I was township supervisor, and I got to address her as a township supervisor for Riley when I represented all 23 townships in regards to the roads, and she was on the board then. I actually believe she was the chair at the time. And I also got to meet her in some of the meetings with Michigan Works, so I didn't know her very well, but saw a very nice write-up in the paper today from Lee Masters, who did serve with her, and said she was a wonderful person.
Just like to have a moment of silence in honor of Pat, please. Thank you. Georgia?
Okay. This time will you stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bowman?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you. Any additions, additions, or changes to the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented. Board?
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to be heard this evening? Thank you. Updates, the Health Department's certification of accreditation. Dr. Markin, oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Delarimbelier.
You gotta...
The director of podium, sorry. Podium.
Gotta get your TV time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Delarimbelier, and I am the Director of Local Health Services at MDHHS. My office works with all of the local health departments throughout Michigan, and we are also the home of the Michigan Local Public Health Accreditation Program. How many of you in here have heard of local public health accreditation? Okay, we've got, you're not the only ones. So, Michigan's local public health accreditation has been around for about 20 years now and is actually the basis for national accreditation, so that it's called the Public Health Accreditation Board at the national level. So Michigan actually set the bar for national accreditation, and it is extremely rigorous, and it takes three years. We come every three years out to visit every local health department, and we go through 12 different programs, everything from onsite wastewater, so your septic systems, inspecting how the local health departments function on that, to WIC and how WIC is functioning in your community, immunizations, and then my office, we come out and look into powers and duties. So how are you upholding the public health code in Michigan? And it's, it's a lot, a lot of work. It's not that we just show up for one week and then we're gone. It's that the local health departments are working on this constantly, every single day, to prove that they are upholding the public health code and protecting the public's health. I would just like to say that we're very honored to be here tonight. We love working with St. Clair County Health Department. It's a beautiful community here. We're appreciative of the opportunity. My colleague Orlando Todd, who is the Bureau Director for Health and Wellness that our division sits in, we appreciate the opportunity to come out, get to see some of the beautiful, the water, and enjoy the weather, and the beautiful leaves, and just to admire the community that St. Clair County Health Department serves every single day. And we just want you to know that St. Clair is recognized not only in your community but across the state. So when St. Clair County was preparing for accreditation, they also were facing an intense hepatitis A outbreak, and St. Clair County set the bar for a lot of the fellow local health departments across the state. They initiated a campaign, hep A no way, that was copied by other health departments across the state because it was so effective. They were also the first health department to engage with peer recovery coaches to try to increase vaccination rates among adults in your community, and that approach was so successful that other health departments adopted it as well. I also just want to acknowledge that the WIC program acknowledged how wonderful the WIC outreach is in the community, and that you have a breastfeeding wall of fame in your health department. And for any woman who's ever tried to feed a baby in any way possible, having a wall of fame for having a successfully fed baby is, is one wonderful way to engage the community and to congratulate women for doing everything they can to keep their babies healthy and safe. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for the tremendous leadership that you all have provided, and that, and your staff, with the entire community, not only here in St. Clair County, but also across the entire state. And with that, I'd like to present this successful certificate of accreditation, and I would like to add that St. Clair County Health Department did pass accreditation with 98% of all indicators passed, which is a tremendous achievement. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your time. Item five, conceptual initiatives?
None.
None, thank you. Item number six, old business, we have none. Item number seven, under new business. Item A, Health Department Staff Development Day, December 13th of 2019.
Make a motion, we send that on to the full board.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven B, the Veterans Affairs Committee Appointment. We think in our last meeting, we discussed having...
Having everybody in, giving them the opportunity to speak up to three minutes, and then what we are going to do is make the decision at our committee meeting the following...
At the next full board meeting?
The next committee meeting. We can do it at the committee.
Next full board meeting?
Next week.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yep, two weeks.
One week. Next week.
Next week. We're off. Very good.
Thanks.
So if it's, if it's okay, if we can, if we'd like to go in alphabetical order, if people are here tonight, so we'd start with Mr. Beebe, and have three minutes to kind of introduce yourself.
Good evening to the board. My name is John Beebe. I am a veteran of the United States Air Force. I live in Fort Grashit, and I was approached by a couple people asking, they had vacancies on the Veterans Committee, so I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring and come out and give it a shot. I had 26 years active duty with the Air Force, and I retired just recently from the Department of Defense after 35 years of service. So I do, I've been around veterans and military most of my life, and I'd just like to represent them in any way that I can. Thank you.
Mr. Belai, Belly?
No.
No? Not here? Mrs. Kaplinger?
Mrs. I figured we'd start with Mrs. and then move to Mr., if that's okay?
What's her name?
Good evening. My name is Veronica Kaplinger. Kind of nervous, so forgive me, but saw the advertisement, I guess, on the website for the county for looking for, to fill the position for the committee. Took it to my husband that evening, and we both talked about it, looking to just be a part of something bigger, to be a part of change, to help move forward, hoping to be a face for female veterans that are out there. I served active duty for eight years. My time was all peacetime, so I didn't have to go overseas. I just served in Operation Bright Star twice in my eight-year time. We did some hurricane relief in Panama. So, yeah, I'm just looking to be a part of something bigger and hopefully change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaplinger?
Yeah, my name's Jeff Kaplinger. I live in Port Huron Township. I found out the same way, my wife had mentioned that she found it on the website, it persists for open. I am a seven-year veteran of the US Army, and another five years in the National Guard. I am a combat veteran. It's not every day an opportunity presents itself where you're allowed to do something you truly believe in, and I think being a part of the Veteran Affairs is important. I know coming from a combat arms MOS when I first got out of the military, the transition from civilian to military was tough. Finding jobs, basically all you find is labor jobs. So I was told before I got out, a lot of resources are available. I'm forced to where to find those resources, I didn't know where to go. And I'd like to use some of the problems and issues that I had going forward when I first got out, and make sure as many veterans in today, when they first get out, don't have to deal with some of these problems. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gillis?
Fighting with a sciatic nerve problem tonight, so if I fall down, understand why. Excuse me. I gained my veteran status in military service on the cusp of Cold, the Cold War era and the Vietnam era. That's 1961 through 1965. I dare say some of us sitting here were not born yet, but that's when I gained my, my status as a veteran. And when I left the service in 1965, it was at a time when the country was experiencing some ugliness in relationship to a war in Vietnam, and I witnessed the ugliness as I was discharged and continued to work with veterans during that period of time. I have sensed that period of time, worked very closely with veterans through various veteran organizations. I'm a lifetime member of the American Legion, life member of the Vietnam Veterans, Vietnam Veterans, and a member of AMBETs. And in all those organizations, I've attempted to work on an outreach basis with veterans. Some of the highlights really relate to my service as a chaplain. I gained ordination and licensing as a chaplain, not only for the American Legion function, which I didn't have to have, but in working with various hospice over the last number of years. That was an experience for me, and I think, I think what I have found in working with veterans is that they're, they're looking for a lot of compassion, a lot of respect, and I think we need to find methods and ways of providing that on an ongoing basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Martindale? Mr. McIver?
My name is Paul McIver. I live in Yale, Michigan. I wasn't a lifetime veteran. I only served three years. I had two tours in Vietnam, came back to the States, was in the 82nd. I got involved with the VFW back here when I got out, and I worked through the VFW through a lot of offices. As a district commander, I was a district commander for St. Clair County for two terms. I was post-commander for three years. I was a state judge advocate for the state of Michigan for three years, and I worked my way through the chairs through the VFW and became the state commander five years ago. As serving as a state commander, I had a lot of opportunity to testify in Lansing, and it's a lot of the boards. I also sat on the board of Veterans Affairs, our Veterans Affairs Office in Detroit. I sat there for three years. I was a chairman for one year. I think I've worked quite a bit for the veterans. I've been a, well, been a VFW member for 30-some years, DAV member, and I continue to fight for veterans as of now, also at the state level, so I thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think that, that's the end.
Somebody just came in, I don't know if he's part of the group or not.
Oh.
In the blue?
Yes. For the Veterans Affairs Committee?
Yes.
Mr.?
Joe Belly.
Belly, yes. If you'd like to take an opportunity, three minute to kind of introduce yourself, if you can move to the podium though where the microphone is? Thank you.
Okay, well, I have to be honest with you, I didn't realize I was going to be speaking in front of a group, but that's okay. I was told I was going to be asked some questions, but my friend Chris Smith, he's a, one of the board of directors here, and he asked me if I would be interested in helping out on the board, and I said, absolutely, I would love to be, I guess it's a nomination process, and as far as, you know, I was in, I was in the Marines with Chris. I was in the Marines for 10 years. I was stationed here at Selfridge. I did time at Camp Pendleton, Camp Lejeune. I was a combat engineer. I was a survival instructor of Marines, swim survival instructor, and a primary marksmanship instructor in the Marine Corps. Loved serving, and I now am an owner with several veterans of a bourbon company. It's called America Bourbon, and we are, myself, another Marine, force recon Marine, his name's Derek in Houston, Daniel Alaric, who is the owner, he's the largest post-9/11 business owner that's a veteran. He owns a company called Grunt Style. I don't know if you're familiar with the T-shirts? They have cross rifles on one sleeve and the forward-facing flag on the other. So I work with them on a regular basis, and we do, we do events all over the world. I mean, the reason I'm late, I apologize, I literally just flew in from Los Angeles, and I was doing events out there, and we do not, we do, we raise, like, we have several veteran musicians that do concerts all over the country. They volunteer. We raise money for wheelchairs for wounded veterans, and I'm not sure what else. I mean, I'm a business owner, I've been an entrepreneur for years, and I think I can lend myself to the board from what Chris has told me of just my connections, my passion for helping veterans. I would love to, I would love to have this opportunity to contribute whatever I can to help out the veteran community. I mean, we're, it's a pretty emotional thing, but, you know, the hashtag 22, the amount of suicides with veterans, I don't know if that, I'm not exactly sure what this committee does, but if anything I can do to help would be a big thing, because I spend pretty much most of my civilian life now through a business application, but trying to do what I can, so.
Good.
I guess that's...
Thank you.
I live, I live in Casco Township.
Okay.
I don't know if that matters, but I spend most of my time somewhere else flying for business, but, but I would do my best effort to be here whenever the board meetings were and contribute to what I can.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Did I miss anyone? Yes, sir. Please take the, thank you, sorry about that.
I'm a four-year veteran of the Army from 90 to 94. I, I was one of the ones that, and I finished basic training just in time to have a little adventure in the sand in 91. I have spent my life serving my community in one capacity or another. I currently serve my township as a firefighter and a medical first responder in Birchville I professionally, I am a Realtor, and I spend, I spend my time looking for ways to get veterans' homes and to educate veterans on the various benefits and the various avenues they can go. I've always believed that being a veteran, it's a brotherhood, and it's a brotherhood that if you've never been there, you won't understand. To, to be part of something that is greater than yourself, it's, it would be an honor to be able to stand up and to, to further that brotherhood, as one gentleman said. We average 22 suicides a day from veterans, and if I could be a small portion of solving or of bringing awareness of ways that those people can reach out for help, it would be, it would be a great honor. I thank you for your time.
Sir, what is your name again?
My name is Troy Piper.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just, quick comment. You know, Howard and I have been on this board a while, and I think others, our Veterans Board was one and two part-time employees at one time. Fortunate that this community supported the Veterans Millet. We really had a lot of backlog in it at the time, and they're fairly well-funded now, and they're doing some, you know, some fantastic things in our community, so it's been a, say neat to see it evolve to the next level to provide that assistance, so. I would make a motion, oh, I'm sorry, Howard.
I was just going to say, I think it's fantastic when we have volunteers like tonight that want to serve on our boards, because we have a number of boards, and we need a lot of people to come in and serve on those boards and give us advice as to how we can best serve the community. And so I'm really appreciative to all of the applicants for this, this board.
Okay, I'd make the motion to move all the names on to the full board.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, other human service matters. Don't believe you have any. Item nine, for information only, 9A, Health Department, September points of interest.
Make a motion to receive and file the Health Department's September Points of Interest. Support.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, receive and file packets?
So moved. Support.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. And item 11, adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
3 o'clock.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Meeting adjourned.
We get to stay right next to each other.
I feel like I took it to Duke last time.
Meeting really gets lively this next one. Typically, I serve popcorn and cocktails.
Yeah, this is the paint drying part of them.
Tomorrow, tomorrow I do.
They weren't leaving before, they're leaving now, Greg.
Scared them all off.
Obviously, they've heard of me. We'll call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bowman?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here. Thank you. Item number two, we have the fiscal year 2020 Child Care Fund approval that needs to be moved to item 7G.
I would so move. Support.
We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the...
Motion to accept the agenda with the...
Second.
We have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Updates? We have none conceptual initiatives?
None.
We have none. We have no old business, so tonight for new business, we have a few different items through the, that we have, Matt Polis is here that can talk, so if we want to start with 7A, the Sheriff's Department's schedule, software. If we could have a motion, then Matt will give us a little insight. So moved. Support. We have motion and support. Matt, if you could. We normally give three minutes, but we're down to 30 seconds on this one.
If we can get it in the schedule.
He can get it in.
Just real briefly, this is a project we've been working on for about six months now. Currently, we have a number of different spreadsheets that we try to track sick vacation and overtime, and the last year or two, we've been tasked by Human Resource to try and find a more efficient way to get these, this data so that it's updated on a more regular basis. There's not a lot of consistency within the department on how often we were doing that, and we've been looking at a lot of options for scheduling for several years now, but a lot of the options we found weren't, weren't cost-effective and didn't do what, what the, what this software can do. This national company, we vetted it, there's several counties in Michigan that are using it, including Washita, who just recently switched to it. So we're confident it's a solution that we can work with to improve the efficiencies.
Good. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Just one. Will this assist you in, let's say, tracking overtime? Because I know in the past, that's been an issue.
Yes, exactly. That's one of the things, it tracks overtime, sick time, vacation, comp time, and they have a lot of, they call them CAN, but already standard reports that we'll be able to run, because right now, all's we're left to is either the county's one solution or, you know, our spreadsheets, which, you know, it's hard to get data out of an Excel spreadsheet on a consistent basis across the entire organization. So we're looking to this to give us some solutions so that we can, can look exactly where our costs are, so that we're, you know, making good decisions based on that. Yes.
Good. Anything else? We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 7B, the Board of Cambusers Appointments. We have a David Carr, who's the Republican representative, and a Von Williams, who is the Democratic candidate, and they've both been sent to us from the respective parties to be approved.
Make a motion, we send them on to the full board.
No.
No, I believe that's final action.
Yes, this is final action because of elections.
Then I will move for final action on it.
Support.
Thank you. We have motion and support for final action, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7C, the Fiscal 2019 Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Award. This is a $14,130, 100% federal grant that we're going to be using for an automobile, I believe.
I'd move this before to the full board.
Second?
We have motion and support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the Department, Sheriff Department Video Surveillance System. If we could get a motion to, to bring this up, then I'm going to have Matt talk about it.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Matt, if you could.
This is for the Drug Task Force, the county owns the building. We're looking to do some upgrades. The building was, obviously wasn't a brand-new building, so we're doing some upgrades to make it more efficient for our needs, and this is one of the pieces. There'll be a couple more coming in the next, you know, six to eight months as we work through the purchasing process.
These are just exterior cameras, right?
Yes, it's an exterior surveillance system, exactly.
It's a, it's a $12,300 item and it, it's obviously, it was bid out. We didn't see the bids, but it shows that it was the low bid.
Yes, there's three bids.
Howard, you had a question?
That, I was just wondering why we don't see the bids here.
Purchasing reviewed it.
Pardon?
Purchasing reviewed it, but we typically do not make public anything that has to do with the Drug Task Force.
Okay.
Could potentially, you know, lead to some problems. Okay?
Very good. We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Mo- opposed? Motion carries. Item 7E, the Fiscal Year 2020 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Award. This is a $209,796 total grant with a 25% local match, which is going to be covered, and I don't know the percentage, but I think it's 50/50 between Region 10 and the Commissary Fund. Picks up the difference.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
We have motion and support. We have motion and support. Are there any questions? We take this free federal money. I don't know if it's free. We're paying for it somehow. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is, is a contract approval request for Everbridge. It's a $52,450. Excuse me. Is it Justin? Where's Justin, Mike? So if you want to throw a motion on the table, we'll have Justin tell us what's going on with this.
I would so move.
Support.
We have motion and support, so Justin's going to let you know what's, what's happening with this.
This is the Everbridge WINS renewal, so it's just a contract renewal. We removed the VCC product out of the Everbridge system and we replaced it with Resident Connect, which allows us to have the voice-over IP feed and the cellphone feeds into it in, in the place of VCC. So we will automatically get all of those telephone numbers into the system without residents having to feed into it, give us their information. So anytime there's an incident, we can draw a polygon around it in the system and we will automatically be able to send alerts out to those telephone numbers. That's what we're replacing. But it's just an upgrade, it's just a renewal for WINS for us.
And tell them how you saved us some money on this. You knocked it down three cents.
We save three cents. We worked very hard with the company to save three cents. It was a difficult process.
That's good. We like that.
Fiscal responsibility for all. Yeah.
Good. Does anybody, yes.
Justin, you had mentioned that you will have access to cellphones.
Just to push information, yes, sir.
Blast out information.
That's correct.
Those cellphones come, where does that information come from?
So the company has proprietary access. They've purchased access from the leading cellphone providers. They don't tell us which ones, but we expect that it's AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, the main carriers.
Everbridge has access to all of those?
Yes, sir.
Do those cellphones include the Times Herald Reporter, myself, and my grandson?
So I, we don't, we don't know exactly what providers, but we expect, and they tell us, that it's the major cellphone providers in our county. So we expect that that's Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile, et cetera.
If you send out a blast, is that blast going to go to all of those phones then? And if there's junior high kids sitting in a classroom with their phone, is that phone going to ping?
So.
Get it?
So, yeah, so it'd be everybody in the polygon that we draw within the, within the alert area. That information would be pushed to those phones in an alert.
I.
Are you?
I'm not sure I'm real comfortable with blasting to students and kids and, I mean, right now, I get all my notifications on WINS.
Okay.
Which I have signed up for. Voluntarily, I signed up for it. Do I want more pinging into my phone with events? Do I want my kids or grandkids getting pinged with that information? It's kind of caught me here, I'm surprised.
We're talking weather alerts and things like that.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just thinking that you got a classroom full of kids and most, most kids carry their, their phone to classroom now from what I understand, and that phone goes off, it disrupts the teaching process for that teacher. There's a warning and all kids get upset because there's a warning now. Do we have to go hide now? And, and things of that nature. Whereas before, the warning went into the school and at the appropriate time, then those kids were moved to a safe location if they needed to get there. I mean, am I looking at this wrong or?
How, how often would some, just give me, for instance, I mean, is this, this, I mean, okay, we got a thunderstorm, ping, da-bing, da-bang?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're talking about. Or, or a major emergent event, right? So they would be, they would have to be selected and that would be sent out. So we're, we're talking, when we would, when we would send those alerts and kids and things like that would be alerted, it would be, we would have to select that. Do you know what I'm saying? So to suffice that issue, we would pick when we want to, when we want to click those people. Does that make sense?
You can't, if you hit the, the send button, it broadcasts to everybody in that particular area that you drew a polygon around of some.
No, we get to pick our audiences.
You could pick your audience.
Yes.
Not within the.
That's just another data feed. So, so that Resident Connect is just another data feed. We can decide whether we want to hit everybody or we want to do an all-call or we want to do just subscribers. That's absolutely something we can do.
Has this changed from last year?
It will be a change, yes. It's in place of VCC. But, but we can turn that on and off, too. So like, say we, say we just want to send out our normal weather alerts, right? Tornado. Tornado would be one where I'd want to hit everybody, right? But a severe thunderstorm, maybe I don't want to hit the people that are coming in on Resident Connect, so we turn that off. That's, that's an easy solution. But at least we have the capability to hit everybody for a terrorist event where we want everybody to lock down or a shooting event where we want everybody to lock down or a plume coming from a critical facility in Marysville that could affect, you know, 20,000 residents in the county. We would want everybody to lock down. This is a.
Still not, I'm not feeling comfort level at this point with those going to students in a classroom to their phones.
To provide their safety?
A tornado and it's not a watch, but a warning, getting the information to the appropriate people at the school, they handle the school lockdowns, the school shelter.
We don't send lockdown.
We don't do that.
We don't send lockdown notices.
But, but I'm saying, any information, if you send a tornado warning or tornado watch-out and all the kids in the school get that, it's going to cause some issues in that school for the teachers, for maybe some of those students, to get them back on task, get them calmed down. Whereas if you send it to the principal or the office people in administration, they have protocols in place for this. I don't see where we need to supersede those protocols by going directly to them. It's just my initial feelings on it and I could be way out.
Justin, why don't we pass it on the full board and form a subcommittee, three commissioners? I'm technically challenged, so I don't care to be on it because I don't do well. But have three of you sit down, set a meeting up with Justin, get some more information and then kind of no different than our, like a change order committee and bring a recommendation back.
Well, I'm just, so an Amber Alert, I'm able to disable that. So these types of alerts, you, some, the user could disable, a parent could potentially disable.
So, yes, well, no, we can shut it off.
Yeah.
Depends, so what we would do is we would make a protocol saying, in these situations, it would be an all-call and in these situations, it won't be. That's how it would be managed.
And I, you know, from a weather standpoint, every kid, if they have a weather app on their phone, it's going off anyway.
Yes.
And that's not, I mean, I have three kids, three phones, that they get an alert. My, my kid will tell me first, well, you know, is the generator working? Cause I think the power might go out because I just got an alert on my phone. So it's already happening to a certain extent. But, so that, that's why when, the Amber Alert, though, in a phone system, sometimes a user can choose not to get that. That's, so that's.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you go, like on an iPhone, if you go in, you just shut the notifications off for Amber Alerts, National Alerts, and iPOS Alerts, right?
Greg's got a question in and he brought it up, so I'm just thinking about, see if I'm going to ask the question correct. Let's say you have an active shooter at one of our schools or some facility.
Right.
I think you'd have a potential safety issue if all the students get all this on all their phone to where the people in charge no longer have control of the situation and kids would not be directed or students or, conventions are anywhere you want, but where the people that potentially would be in charge, if we could share a fair, I don't know if that would be a good thing to have all the kids for the.
No, I think the way that the system works is the law enforcement agency in that situation you were using, let's say it was at Corryer High School, Corryer Police Department, we have to contact central dispatch if they.
Right.
That's the only way you would get it. They wouldn't be able to send it on their own. The department would have to request.
Right.
They want, say, like Justin said, a mile around Corryer High School, they want this area, whatever message sent out. The dispatcher, they train every month on this, they would draw us a one-mile circle around Corryer High School and the message, whatever the supervisor or the Corryer Police Representative said, they would send that message out.
Yeah, there's only two release authorities in the county, my office and dispatch.
The cell that, is it coming off of the billing address of the owner that owns that phone or somehow hanging the location of that phone?
It's, it's coming from the billing address. Yeah.
So whatever bill, so if they were in school and the, and the incident was somewhere else, they're not going to get that message because it's going by their home address.
Right.
That's what, that's the information that this company is, is.
That's right.
Putting forward. That might be, thank you.
Good. Any other questions?
Oh, we got the motion and a second, forward it to the full board, correct?
Correct.
And.
I just said, if you guys want some further discussion on it, if you wanted to get, you know, the, if you feel necessary to. Okay.
I can make a decision.
Cool.
Good. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7G, Fiscal Year 2020 Child Care Fund Approval. This was sent.
This was my fault. Mike McMillan did send it to me in time for the agenda, but I forgot to forward it on to have it on the agenda.
Okay.
So.
Is Mike here?
He is not. He's in Lansing this week.
Okay.
I wonder if somebody knows about this, if we could get it in a nutshell, because I haven't had a chance to study it yet.
Said he could be here next week at the full board meeting to answer questions.
Well, we got, well, we need a motion to forward this to the full board then?
To, to send it on to full board, this has already been sent to the state. This is an application, correct?
I'll make a motion to send it to the full board and then.
Yeah, and then have Mike come in. I'll support.
Okay, we have motion and support. We'll open for discussions.
Greg, because potentially at the full board, we can actually table it. If necessary, we don't have the information that we, if Mike's going to be here and answer all our questions and we're comfortable, we can finish it there for final action, but if not, we can easily table it.
At next week's meeting, based on the information we get. It is just a $5.6 million and it's, you know, it's not little. So if that's what everybody's wishes are, we have the motion then to send a full board, so we'll ask Mike to be here at the next meeting. So we have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any other judicial and public safety matters at this time? Once, twice, three times. Motion received and filed?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Howard, you up?
I'm on deck.
Thanks, Matt.
Like all the Environmental Public Works Committee meetings to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Present.
Commissioner Greatap?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Any citizens here to be heard regarding environmental and public works? Saying none? Any updates from commissioners? I, I just have one regarding park and rec. Jeff, Bill, and I were at the ribbon-cutting for the Blue Water Riverwalk Park. Beautiful facility. If you haven't been down there, you definitely owe it to yourself to go down and see its beautiful development. I would also like to report that the Friends of the Lighthouse, the Sandfest, raised about $16,500. The volunteers are using that money to restore many of the facilities out there. If you haven't been out to see some of the restoration work, it, it's phenomenal. They're returning the duplex building back to supposedly, as it would have been back in the 1930s, and they're doing an incredible job. In the six years with Sandfest, they've raised almost $200,000 for projects out there. As you know, we voted to replace the roof on the duplex building. It was $90,000 that we approved. Friends of the Lighthouse have indicated they'll pick up a third of that cost and we're going to, we don't want to take all of their money. Obviously, $16,000 wouldn't do it. They wouldn't be able to do any projects. But they think over a three-to-five-year period, if the success continues with Sandfest, they should be able to pay the $30,000 toward that metal roof, that historical metal roof. So that's good news. The other piece of information, next year, Sandfest will be held in August and not July. So keep that in mind, first weekend, I'm sorry.
No, I was just, I wanted to bring something up. I guess I was going to do Ways and Means, but it's more, I guess, environmental related. Commissioner Rushing, Commissioner Baldwin, myself, we were in, the reason we moved this meeting is the three of us were in Washington DC last week and we went to some different meetings. A lot of different department heads, you know, presidential appointees, talking about all kinds of stuff. One of the things I found was to be fairly interesting, I asked a question. You know, with the DTE, we have obviously three plants. We're getting a new gas plant which is being built now and the things that I hear from constituents from time to time is, okay, when we convert to all this gas, when is gas going to be depleted? You know, what kind of reserves, so on and so forth that we're talking. The individual, they weren't the number one person, but they were definitely two or three in the administration, way up the food chain. And what they had said, they talked about being a net exporter for the first time, that they take the natural gas, they do whatever they do to compress it, they send it, tremendous amount of gas supplies now where you've actually become energy, much more energy independent, right? Or much more energy, yeah, that's the right word, not dependent, independent. They said they don't predict, they look to 2050 and they see $5 gas out till 2050. That's just emphasizing how much natural gas. That's just emphasizing how much natural gas reserves that there are. And it's important to really know that because, let's face it, the business sector, so DTE, will be building more power plants someday, right? What's that next power plant look like? You know, I mean, and these other investments. So I just, I, I found it interesting because we've seen the, you know, ebb and flow on stuff. I mean, Howard, remember, we were doing the landfill gas contract. Natural gas is like 12 bucks and, you know, and then we end up doing. Thank God we didn't sign that deal. We would have not been producing anything today. But I just, I thought, I found that to be very, very interesting, you know, and just kind of how we position ourselves, or, you know, long-term moving forward, so.
Okay. Any other?
Just one, something really quick. Because I serve on the county road commission board. Capeback Road, not that any of you get out there in Berlin Township, but the contract, we went out there last night, and they are doing a phenomenal job. It's going to be a very nice road when they get done with it. All the businesses, they're putting in the curbs for all the businesses out there. And it's pretty impressive, the work they're doing out there. I mean, it's first class so far, what I've seen. So just added boy for our road commission.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Okay. Any conceptual initiatives from administration?
None.
No old business, new business. The 2020, 2024 capital improvement program.
I'd move this be sent to the full board.
Okay.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions?
None, none that are any.
Got a lot of, lot of neat projects moving forward with the county. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried.
And we'll have the money to, to do all those projects.
All 300 million. Lindsay, did you want to? Lindsay, did you want to talk?
I mean, you can answer questions if you have any.
Nope, I don't have any. I just wondered if you wanted to.
Other than, Lindsay, where are we getting the money? Where are we getting all of the money?
No.
Danielle will take care of it.
Easy peasy, right? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Brownfield redevelopment authority reappointments.
Make motion, we forward them to the full board.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion? We're very fortunate, again, with all of the people that have stepped up to, to participate in our many boards and commissions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. We have the landfill contract with Talaski.
We have Matt here, but I'll make motion that we do send that to the full board.
Support.
If he wants to explain anything on it.
They've been with us since I've been around, you know, 15 years, and always, you see the reports, always in compliance, never have any red flags, all the above, so.
Has this, just out of curiosity, has this ever gone out for bids? Or have they been doing it forever? And it's just, they do a great job. We love them.
Well, I think we've actually talked about it, but one of the things you got to remember, we brought Jim Logstine, our landfill consultant, to before.
That's correct. I think it was six years ago now. We asked Jim to come in, and we sat down, and we renegotiated the contract pretty much in full. And we got satisfactory responses from them with regards to pricing and scope. And we re-upped with them at that time. And since that time, we've had two con- one, two-year contract extension, I believe, maybe two, where they elect, they agreed to hold their pricing at the level that the original contract ended at. So, and just as a side note, that extension ends at the end of the year. And I'm currently in talks with the Talaskis to renegotiate those numbers and modify some of the scope. So I should be approaching my boss and all of you, my other bosses, before the end of the year with a recommendation on that.
And I just wanted to take one thing, and Jim is an industry veteran, 35-year waste management district manager. He knows what the going rates are on things, so on and so forth. And I think another piece of this you really need to be cognizant of is the bioreactor piece of it. How do you manage that and handle that? If you get a contractor out there that's not familiar with those things, you know, I, I get the waste stuff. And I mean, a contractor can really screw you up.
Well, I, I wouldn't say that we couldn't live with a different contractor. I wouldn't say that we couldn't live with a different consulting firm. I mean, I mean, let's be honest. But having said that, there's a lot of benefit as long as we're getting the appropriate pricing on contracts to continue with folks who have been involved in that very important activity. And both of them have since the bioreactors inception 15 years ago.
Any questions for Matt?
And if I could make one more comment with respect to capital improvement projects, I'll make sure we hire the money to pay for mine. So you don't have to worry about that.
You did have a couple.
I, I, I noticed on the report that only the January gas production was down. The rest of the time, it's been right at 97-plus percent.
Yeah, they've, they've done well.
Doing very well.
And we've done, we tried to keep our end of the bargain up with them by getting them the gas.
Excellent. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
I think another point, not only the price from Talaskis, but also the fact that they have, in my opinion, been, been doing, as Jeff said, good service in terms of making sure that we're always in compliance. And I know some landfills in the state of Michigan give nasty calls all the time from Michigan DEQ. Okay. Next item, the Smiths Field Landfill Activities Report.
Did he take a vote on that?
All in favor?
An all favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. We'll be sending that on to the full board for, as it involves money, we'll have to have a roll call vote on that. The Smiths Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Motion received and filed?
Support.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carried. Any other environmental or public works matters? Seeing none? We have information only.
Make motion to, receiving file, monthly park financial documents.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reven, receive and file packets.
Motion.
It's been moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Order.
We are adjourned.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Item two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion. We received the agenda as, or approved the agenda as presented.
Can I have a second?
You have.
You do.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion approved. This time, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move to updates. We have no updates, no conceptual initiatives, no old business. Move to seven A, new business. Seven A, key scan billing access controls upgrade.
I'd move this be sent to the full board. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 2019 budget adjustments. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?